Meeting is beginning. Okay, ready? Do you want to take attendance?
Absolutely. Chairperson Amy Davenport.
Now I am present.
Vice Chairperson Lydia Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Tomas Palm.
Here.
Commissioner Tamara Robertson is absent. And Commissioner Carson Blitsoe is absent. You do have a vote.
Outstanding, thank you. And this tells me there are no public comments.
Yes.
Very good. We will move on to the consent agenda. Item number one, approval of the regular meeting minutes from February. Let us take a moment to approve them.
Motion actually approved most.
Okay.
It is.
My second.
And the motion that's been made to approve the minutes from February 7th as they are.
Chairperson Amy Davenport.
Right.
Vice Chairperson Lydia Johnson.
All right.
Commissioner Tomas Palm. Thank you.
Very good. The motion has passed. We will now move on to item number two, reports from officers and council liaisons. Looks like we had a report from our very own planning and zoning liaison, Chris Carter.
On page five of the packet, there's an ordinance for regards P and Z. But I'm going to kind of put a pause on it in that council has also decided to take all the advisory boards into a workshop so that we more closely align all the language that we're, because we're talking about terms and placements. We're making clarifying amendments. But if you have any questions on anything that you've seen in this, but I do see that on items three and four, you're planning on nominations for chairperson and vice chairperson. When you were placed as chair, if you're down for it, you were placed at a three-year term. So that still exists. So we asked the city attorney at the meeting during regarding these changes. The changes only go in fact, at the time of passage, they're not retroactive. So that kind of, so all the numbers here, nothing about their terms change. You were placed on as three-year terms. This would apply to anybody who's placed on P and Z after passage of the ordinance.
So nothing changes at this point?
Correct. It only applies to any new members. So at the end of your three-year term, then it would refer to a one-year term that annually P and Z chooses their.
Term.
So I just wanted to address that because I see that there's the three and four on.
Does that, this, for continuity wise, does that, does that die? Does that make the most sense to keep it like that? I mean, we're, we're, we're open to.
You, you. As a body can decide is just letting you know that per ordinance, you were assigned to a three-year terms chair.
But if assuming, assuming what you're talking about passes, then in relation to that, what would make the most sense?
Can you rephrase it? Put me on my understanding.
So city council is looking at an ordinance that would, that would modify the, the terms and stuff for P and Z members.
Correct.
Would what we have currently with keeping everyone how they are be the, the best continuity for when that kicks in? Or like, is there going to be some adjustment period when that kicks in where like, okay, well now we've got to kind of fudge things a little bit because we've got these people who were brought in under the old plan and now we've got a new plan?
It's, there's probably going to be a little growing angle and it's just going to be about record keeping and making sure that we understand, okay, I was nominated as a three-year term. I was nominated as a three-year term. Oh, these two people were nominated under two-year terms. The other change would be based on the city's attorney's regulation. There will not be alternates. There'll be seven members.
Right.
Seven full voting members. So what that does for quorum is it moves it from three to four.
Okay.
And if you have questions on the legality of it, I asked him that question. He's like, well, why does mine alternate? And his thinking was because P and Z is so important and they make important decisions about zoning, et cetera, that you don't want alternates who may or may not always show up. And then a big vote happens and they suddenly show up and they're not versed in what's been going on? You don't want them voting, which is how we kind of have it set up. So there's like, get rid of alternates on P and Z.
Chris, the only issue is that the core posted four and many a time we only get three in our meetings.
We're going to have to bump it up and make sure Mike gets here.
And so the alternates have not been moved to full voting members yet. That would be the mayor.
P and Z doesn't have any alternatives.
I was going to say, we don't have any.
So there aren't a lot of people that are going to be moved up?
No.
And so yes, it will cause a strain on quorum because they're moving the body from five members to seven members. So if you know anybody that wants to participate, it would help you all out because yes, it will. It will be, yes, that's a factor too.
Okay.
And then I guess the follow-up question to that is in preparation for if this passes and we change from five to seven, the individuals, if we pick up two new P and Z members tomorrow, hypothetically speaking, they would still be alternates because this happened.
What, 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 what happens in here? Well, yes, actually, yes, if there are two people, they'd be alternates.
And then we're all on the old ones.
The two new members, basically what, what they did with this ordinance is that they, they, the mayor used to do the alternates. And so it to give, instead of just saying mayor doesn't get a choice on P and Z, what they said is, okay, the mayor gets two picks for P and Z. Because you could stay at five if you wanted to. The council chose to move it to seven.
Now, what about in this case, Chris? I, I remember reading something about each of the council members. So for example, our new council members like Krista, would she be assigning or, or choosing or sponsoring a new P and Z member?
Not at this moment, not at this juncture. That's what we're trying to move to in the future, which is how we have the other advisory board set up, which is two-year terms for the mayor's council and their stagger.
And do you have an estimated time of when we might expect that that would push through and be implemented?
I don't know.
I don't really.
Well, there's a disagreement in the background regarding whether or not this has passed yet.
Whether or not it has passed yet? So.
Passed with a T or passed with a S E D?
S E D.
S E D.
Okay. So this is, this has already come up to city council.
Yes, and we've made, made a motion.
Some people think that this is in effect right now and other people think.
Council will have this in effect, yes.
Yeah.
And the city attorney? He hasn't spoken on the topic yet.
Okay, I have a question. I thought ordinance changes had to come through us too. No, not this?
Yeah. Only, only, only has to do with zoning. Zoning used to come through you, but they could change, like this is just the document to, to make the committee. So they can change that any way they want to without going through.
I got it.
Well, I, I feel like that issue kind of needs to be settled before we come up with two more individuals to figure out, are they alternates or are they?
Correct. And that's why I was saying, we are planning a workshop. So this may change.
When is your workshop planned for?
I don't have.
The, in the 27th of this month.
Okay.
And what, 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 what we've seen in these ordinance, and this is way off topic, but none of our committees have the same language and the same setup. And so what we're trying to do is kind of have a boilerplate of all the, P and Z is a little bit different because of what you do when you're in state law. But how the people are nominated is different between the boards. How it's set up is different between the boards. Resignations and appointments may be different from boards. There's a lot of different language because they were written by different people at different times. And so we're trying to kind of have a, a cohesive document that as much as we can, all the committees will mirror each other for ease and for ease.
So that, that sounds great. I mean, that, that sounds like that's how it should be. I'm just trying to be mindful right now, the decisions that we make right now. I'm trying to be mindful of the impact that will have. And if that's something that's getting ready to happen now, or that's something that we don't have to worry about.
It will happen sooner than later.
Okay. So we'll, we'll.
Just a quick, right now.
Well, yeah, but it, it impacts our agenda right now.
Well, I, I, you know, let's just pause those two things on our agenda.
Yeah.
Because either way, even if this is considered passed, is it retroactive? You were assigned for a three-year terms chair. You were assigned for a three-year terms vice chair. So this annual reassigning is an option now because as a body you get to decide that.
And I, right. If, if, but if, but if this goes into effect next month, I look, I look, I was speaking and city council members say, hey, you know, we're the own city council and we would like to designate, you know, someone to be on P and Z to be kind of my representative. Great. And then those people should have a voice and then we should decide, hey, do we want to keep things how, how they were before these, before this new? Or do we want to go ahead and embrace this new thing and say like, let's open that up? Let's, let's, let's talk about this.
Which I think I'm open to. I don't, yeah.
I'm surprised because we are, we can have a voice in that. I mean, if city council said it would be seven members, seven voting members, that we can say, now we own one out of five. Is that really an option? You, you can overrule that anyhow.
I mean, council can decide or council can make the board and change it however they want.
So our discussions are really.
Right.
Very normal.
And, and, and going forward, how would be how the other committees work is let's say that I, my term is up in November. Okay. And let's say that I nominated Lydia. And let's say I ran and I won. I could go and, and so Lydia is attached to me. So I would nominate if she wanted to continue Lydia to be on the board. Let's say I ran and I lost and there's another council member that comes on board. And so you were with the old person that was off now. So I can nominate anybody that I wanted to.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have to name Lydia, but somebody else, the other three or the other two council members could not.
Either the four back two or three year term has passed.
Well, there won't be a two or three year term.
It won't be a two or three year term.
One-year.
Council, council serves a two-year term.
Okay.
Correct. So it'll be on a, on a two-year term once you cycle through.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You sent me that spreadsheet with the people and when they were assigned and what they did. Did you have to knock it out? Could you make it?
So, yes.
So the answer is no, you can't get out of your job. So you have to keep that.
Keep your job.
Yeah, nobody can quit.
Yeah, our, our no time finding people to come. People do that, so.
So this court situation, we have a whole time that we won't have a court. Did you guys in city council discuss the option of having somebody zooming in either by phone or by, by, by?
That is only set by law. By law. So that cannot be done. As an un-say person, I believe it can be done. Because that may be an option for all, all the committees here so that they do have more court. Somebody's traveling or homesick or something.
If you're in Switzerland, if you're in Switzerland, you have to.
I think I have sent to you. Don't be wondering. Things that's the 25, not this year. And then of course, Chris is permanent now. He really left the state. And then Josh, I'm sorry, Chris left and Josh left and Carson lived up. And his, it was an expiration from 2020.
So we have four alternative now or am I going to?
No, we have five. We have five because Carson's here, Tamara's here, you're here, I'm here, Amy's here.
Without any alternative, it's four. All alternatives.
Yeah, that's your.
It could be good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
Once he gets to go to his.
Long as I get one.
Gets to go to your council, sorry.
December-ish.
Tamara. We've got him on camera too often.
Oh, yeah, 21.
That should be 21. Lydia, 21. She is. But is she the same as, she should be the same as Tamara, right?
And she was an exception.
I'm just going to say.
I'm special.
They got a lot of folks like us.
Yeah.
I should.
She was an alternate.
Especially.
Her term ended in 22 and then she went from an alternate to a full-time.
Okay.
Full member.
I wonder if we should update that. That would make more sense than if you made that say 23 maybe or whatever she became, December 22. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would make more sense.
I don't know when, so this, this meeting was actually January 13th of, that's when, where this came from. Thought I'd see when she actually became, went from alternate.
No, I was just looking at the days and the days didn't make sense. If people have the same date for their time of expiration. And it's a little weird to 24.
I'm probably the longest sitting commissioner at this point.
Because you were.
It looks like they may have restarted. Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay.
But that's the days that we have.
Very good. Thanks. Chris, anything else for us? Got any questions firing back at Chris, anything?
Well, we already have this agreement. It hides the defense by the definition.
All right. So moving on to our regular agenda, we'll see items three and four are both to discuss the possible actions on nominations for a chairperson and a vice chairperson. So do we need to make a motion to?
You can.
We, we don't really want to.
We don't want to mess with that right now.
You can just bypass this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just go to the.
The appropriate action is not to take action.
Yeah. Okay. And we don't want to table it either because that brings on our agenda.
Yeah, right.
So we just want to ignore it. If you've got to do anything, don't ignore it and say, those items would be.
You can just say, we're going to, there's this little.
Okay.
You can, if you wish, if you wish to postpone indefinitely, that ends it.
Great. Okay. And we don't need a motion for that? I could just.
That's great. Well, you, you as chair could make that motion if you want and then say without objection and.
Or I can just.
Just fine.
Use the gavel of power. I, I do hereby postpone indefinitely items three and four.
Okay.
Let's move on to regular agenda. Item number five, discussion, take a survey from the planning, voting commission, biennial review of City of Woodcreed's comprehensive plan adopted October 12th, 2022. And that should say Lydia by it.
Yes. Okay. In front of you, you have a document. And basically what I did was looked at, you know, kind of outline of the 76 pages and condensed it to eight. So. Yes. So here we go. A comprehensive plan, the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan was to take into consideration citizen input. And so the purpose of this presentation is that planning and zoning commission has a duty to review the Woodcreed comprehensive plan biannually. So the first, on page two, there is a vision statement. And this is kind of wording that was taken from what the citizens had to say is they want to seek preserve the peaceful, rural, fair and feeling of this community through sustainable land management, responsible planning, quality infrastructure management and thoughtful development practices. Residents choose Woodcreed as a home for its safety, convenient location, recreational opportunities and a high quality of life. So that's pretty much the background. The next page, page three is the table of contents. And that's probably the spine of the document that you're looking at right now. So moving on to page four and five, this is our introduction to the comprehensive plan. It's a vision for the future. It's a policy guide for long-term planning driven by citizen input and a framework for allocation of resources. That's what that whole paragraph says. Okay. Chapter 213, Texas Local Government Code. I'm not going to insult anybody by reading that, but it's basically the comprehensive plan. A municipality may adopt a comprehensive plan for long-range development of the municipality. And it's, it can include, but not limited to provisions on land use, transportation, public facilities, a single plan or a coordinated set of plans organized by subject and geographical area, which is what we have, and be used to coordinate and guide the establishment of developmental regulations. And I asked Kevin this, if we have it in our charter or by ordinance, the relationship between the comprehensive plan and developmental regulations to provide standards. Okay, moving on to page five. Chapter 211, Local Government Code. This is basically compliance with the comprehensive plan zoning regulations. They must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan and must be designated to, A, lessen congestion in the streets, safety from fire, panic and other dangers, promote health and the general welfare, provide adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks and other public requirements. Okay? That's the government code, Texas Local Government Code. Moving on to pages six and seven. And if anybody has a question, just let me know. I'm, I'm moving pretty quickly. Okay. The acknowledgements are all of the people that were serving on city council or had served on city council during some of this planning, planning and zoning, the comprehensive plan committee, the city administration, Pegasus and Cape Brees were involved, parks and recreation, platinum panel, ordinance and review and tree board. So all of the people are listed on there that served in those capacities. Okay. Creation of the comprehensive plan, it's created in four different phases. Establishing a work group, development and implementation of a community-wide survey and with a review of the results, focus group meetings to allow further input by community on targets identified by the survey and formulation of the end of plan, the comprehensive plan. And we did send out a survey. We did have a focus group meeting at the VFW hall. In the comprehensive plan document, there are all these nice little graphs and charts and everything that were part of all of that planning. So moving on to pages 10 through 42. Okay. This is an overview of the City of Woodcreed and its current conditions at the time. Roads, how much acreage we encompass, how many residents, that sort of thing, where we're located, all of those type of things. The demographics and size and population, non-residential commercial entities. We have Double J, we have Camp Yodida, Go Country Spirits. And now a cigar lounge has been added since the comp plan was developed. Our median age statistic was 59 years old.
That's adding through the kids?
Huh?
That's adding through gender?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yep. Includes everybody. So write it down to 59. So we're still old. Okay. It talks about the housing and the demographics of the housing, like what kind of housing we have within the city limits and the ETJ. Kind of the, the types of houses, apartment houses, long-term rentals. There's 70 homes at the time that were long-term rentals. There are less than 120 lots available for new construction. Our ETJ remains primarily undeveloped. And we have a diverse housing market with apartments, townhomes, duplexes, single-family residents, both on small lots and acreages. And it doesn't say fourplexes, but we have those. And I mentioned the commercial enterprises. Environmental and features impacting development within the city. And then ETJ, it's located on page 14. And it talks about, you know, steep slopes and segmentation, fire control, accessibility of emergency vehicles and emergency response time. Okay. Moving on to page 15, we have trees. And main issues there are preservation of heritage trees, large trees, planting trees and oak well. Oak well is a big part of what we're doing.
Can we discuss these things? Like the oak wood? I don't know what is, what kind of regulations we have for oak wood. But I mean, it seems like it is all voluntary. You know, the oak wood can, can spread and we're desperate. I mean, maybe Kevin can explain what is occurring.
Yeah, it spreads through the roots of trees. Once a tree is infected, they have like interspersed roots.
Right.
It can spread that way. And we do have an ordinance for oak well.
Which tells especially someone has to get down there, tree on its property and replace it or whatever. Is that being enforced? How do we enforce that? With lots of trees around, we seem to have oak wood down there.
Let me, let me interject for just a second. The yes, is, is, is part of your, there's a tree board and there's an ordinance. So, so people are definitely looking at the trees. Lydia, maybe you can state this better because I'm just going from my, my recollection. But the, the purpose of us having a biennial every two-year review of the comprehensive plan is to not necessarily hold accountable, that's not quite the right word, but it's to, it's to be like, hey man, is city council, is the city still heading in the right direction? This is what we, the people.
Right.
Came up with.
Okay.
And is P and Z, we have, we have some authority. Is there any stuff that we need to be addressing? Or is there anything that we feel like the city or city council isn't addressing? So that's kind of our focus is not, not necessarily to pick apart the individual thing. Couldn't be like, hey, are we still heading in the right direction?
Well, there's homework after this. I'll, I'll be saying on the very last page of this, the takeaway from the review and, and I'm going to ask y'all to really come up with things that you feel like we need to work on, city council needs to work on and that sort of thing. Yeah.
Also, it's to update because at the time that this was done, the census wasn't out. The demographics may have changed through time since. So it's just kind of keeping this document young and fresh.
Right.
What year was this year? What's the publication?
It was October of 22.
22.
So it's been two years down the road.
And that point was adopted, but it's been worked on since 2019, I believe.
Yes. And it was in several iterations before it was enough.
And, and how does that, so in the Air Force, we, we go through our pubs and we make a change. You know, on page one, you say this pub was updated on this. And then in the document, there's little areas where you can thumb through and say, oh, I see this section was amended in 2024. Hey, who does that? And, and how, how is? Hey, who does that, and, and how, how is it?
That is our recommendation to council, that goes to council for amendments to this.
Gotcha, okay.
So we're not really supposed to, as you said, not willing to discuss it per se? Because we have our trees, I have heard several comments from neighbors about the tree ordinance, but it's will not replace or, right?
Our, our job right now is not necessarily discuss that. Our job is to identify that as an issue, and then decide, is that something P and Z needs to get involved with, or that, you know, do we need to make a recommendation on the city council to do something, do we need to hold a public hearing? But it's not necessarily to talk about those issues, it's to identify.
But we can add it to a list for future.
Right, and that's what, you think it's, it's part of your homework assignment, I can teach you good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, and on that topic, if you wish to bring it up the next time, you could bring the actual existing local ordinance, and look at it and go, you know, we have some recommendations possible.
Yeah.
Or something we want, hey, council, as part of this comprehensive plan, we want you to focus on specific language here, or?
Basically, what I'm doing is reviewing what, all the documentation in a very quick manner, so that, this is a very lengthy document. We're going to get to a series of strategies and actions that we need to really focus on, on how are we doing on those strategies and actions? And so those are coming, so. Um, and I'm at shallow water courses, we have Cypress and Hog Creek, uh, floodplains, floodways, repairing, repairing the buffers, impervious cover limits, to lessen flooding, uh, influences on local environment, increased population, which causes strain on the watershed, human development, or impervious cover changes to natural landscape, uh, protection of groundwater resources imperative to maintain for future generations, Cypress Creek watershed and Jacob's Well groundwater management zone. Uh, Wood Creek is located in both of these zones, and we give our drinking water from those. Okay, um, drainage, okay. Drainage, Wood Creek has more sheet drainage rather than drainage infrastructure to control runoff during significant rain effects. This affects our drinking water resources. It also affects a lot of other things, and I'll go into some of that in the action plan. Uh, nature, we've got a lot of birds, trees, again, oak well is not a known issue. Air quality, deer, concerns over the, uh, overpopulation, night pollution. We feel designated as a dark sky community, but we have people that keep really bright lights on all night long. Uh, noise pollution, um, those are noted.
Dennis Fassar.
Uh, parks, master plan, we have a master plan. We have a handful of parks and green spaces. And Creekside Park has been added since this implementation. Uh, a gazebo was also added to the triangle. So I'm kind of putting in things that I know have happened since this. Okay, infrastructures, Wood Creek has agreements with service providers, but does not own utilities that services cities such as electricity, or now it's electric co-op, water and wastewater, Aqua Texas, uh, cable and internet spectrum, telephone spectrum frontier, trash and recycle waste connections. We've got thirty-four roads for a total of ten point nine five miles, and that was noted as the number one priority for citizens. Drainage, no official drainage infrastructure within the city. That's some, an area that was noted that needed to be worked on. Trails, no public walking trails, listed as a high priority on the citizen survey. City Hall is kind of small to hold meetings. We get in here on a hot topic and it's, it's crowded. Uh, our water hydrants are flush valves. They are not water hydrants, those are, they're used to fill up the tanker trucks for firefighting, but they cannot be hooked to immediately a fireplace. Okay, fiscally, we are adware dependent. Our land availability, there's very little left in the city, very little commercial zoning. Uh, ETJ, uh, they have to request annexation if they are in the ETJ. We cannot, as a city, go out and try to annex them. Uh, aquifer availability limits future development. Uh, the next item, financial stability, adware taxes are stable, healthy reserves, and good credit rating. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking for page number.
Oh, about forty-one.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're on.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, we're on thirty-nine. All right.
Okay.
Um. I was trying to keep you posted on it, and then I got talking. We're still under current conditions, so, um, let's see. Yeah, we're way back here. Yeah, we're way back here. Okay. Okay, so, um, land availability, financial stability, project funding. The city must look for grants and others, for other sources of funding to fund desired projects. Uh, land use, here we go with land use. Um, one large subdivision is what we are, with no city center and one small retail area. This was developed as a resort, it was not developed as a city. And so we kind of frame that infrastructure on top of it. So, there we are on that. Um, vast, the variety of houses, single-family, fourplex, townhomes, apartments. Best portion of the city is owned residential because of the off course, and the ETJ is largely undeveloped. Now we're moving to the city survey on page forty-three. Okay, nine hundred and eleven surveys were sent out, four hundred and eleven were returned. Uh, while less than fifty percent were returned, the sample size and responses were significant. Um, city survey focused area most valued in order were natural beauty, peace and quiet, location, safety, and rural setting. Our most pressing issues according to the survey were roads, number one. Pedestrian safety and mobility were number two, entry participation were number three. Future development goals, uh, according to the survey, limited to no commercial growth, uh, more restaurants, coffee shops, and/or food trucks. Uh, number three, maintain Wood Creek's character and charm. Respondents were against growth and commercial development. Um, at that point in our discussion, when we're talking about STJs. Um, parks and green spaces, respondents were neutral to dissatisfied. Top two wishes were a community pool and a playground. Uh, address mobility, traffic calming, and implementing safe walking spaces as needed to support residents who like to walk. Walking along roadways such as Wood Creek Drive was cited as unsafe. Okay, so our vision, here's where we come into our action plan. And that is page forty-seven. And we're going to be all the way to page sixty-eight by the time we finish this. Okay, four, uh, target areas were identified, natural systems, physical systems, fiscal, uh, money, monetary systems, and land use. So the first one, the natural systems, the goal overall was to preserve Wood Creek's natural rural setting. Strategy one, protect what exists, enforce protective regulations for trees, community education programs for rainwater collection, oak well, drought tolerant landscaping, and reducing chemical use in landscaping. These are where you need to make notes, because if you feel like we, we have not, as a city, addressed some of these, that's what we need to send to council, is these things need to be more addressed, okay? Okay, incentive, incentivize rainwater collection. Uh, I know some of that is happening, but it's been a discussion. Protect impervious cover limits and create regulations for the Mental Trinity and Jacob's Well recharge zones. Create green building initiatives, promote protection of natural habitats and ecosystems. Participate in annual everyday events and promote tree planting. Invest in public plan through tree care, planting, watering, and other activities to improve our quality spaces. Strategy two, under, um, our natural systems. Increase and improve parks and green spaces, update the parks master plan, I know that's been done. Uh, pursue purchase of additional parkland and green space. And we've added Creekside, and we've done the gazebo. Uh, review and revise platting and subdivision codes to promote more green space allocation and design. Pursue grants and other funding to improve park amenities with playscape as a priority, and I know that one has been done. Consider and plan to achieve goal of community pool, and consider replacement of a dog park. These are all action items with strategies. Okay, let's move to physical systems. The goal, overall goal, is to improve existing structures with both roads and mobility. Uh, renegotiate franchise agreements to lower rates and improve customer service. Electricity, survey showed a general satisfaction with PEC. Water and sewer, survey showed low satisfaction ratings for Aqua Texas. This public utility should be seen as a high priority for action, and we are working on that. Uh, cable and internet, survey showed general satisfaction with spectrum, and noted outer, with noted outages, rising costs, and slowest, slow, slowness connectivity. Okay, I'm going to take a breath, and maybe my, my.
Would you like to blow us a water?
No, I'm good, it's just that I, my brain is starting to function faster than my mouth can go. Okay, so telephone, fewer people are using landlines, so that's not ineffective. Traffic and recycling, survey showed sad and effective rating for waste connection. And they have been very, uh, good about leaping in and taking care of things. Okay, repair all roads in the city of Wood Creek and create a long-term maintenance plan. Develop a master transportation plan and policy, Platinum Roads Panel. Finish the creation of a capital improvement plan, Platinum Roads Panel. Pursue grants and alternative funding resources. Uh, and then address drainage and ca, traffic comments with road improvements. We did the road improvements, we did not do drainage.
We're working on it.
And I know you're working on it, but that's something that, you know, needs to be addressed. We've got these pretty roads, and if we don't take care of drain, drain.
Bottom line.
Oh, music to my ears.
Not that anything will happen, but now we. No, not that it'll be, I mean, it takes a long.
You'll have, uh, you'll have a plan for a plan.
We'll have a plan for a plan, you're getting it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a, you know.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, strategy three, create walking trails to address pedestrian safety. Seek alternative funding through grants, work with Hayes County on existing trails projects, obtain engineering studies to work on placement of trails in the community, utilize citizen feedback to create a plan and prioritize root, roots. And that was part of that, uh, big meeting that we had, um, at the B L P, that people were showing where they lived and where they liked to go, and that's everything, so. Uh, create a timeline for execution of the plan, including funding. And now we're moving on to fiscal systems. Fiscal systems, reduce the burden on taxpayers and over-reliance on increasing adware taxes to fund city projects. Strategy one, maintain suitable reserves and manage the annual budget to reduce excess spending. Decrease annual spending in maintenance and operations budget area to provide funds for projects instead of using reserve funds. Do not spend over five hundred thousand of the net reserves and maintain few months of operating expenses from the committed funds balance in the general fund. I don't know if all of that's been done, so.
It is, it's actually, and we actually changed the fund balance policy here recently, so that will maybe be looked at.
Okay. Utilize existing reserves, no more than half of the general fund reserves in any single year, to fund small projects rather than seeking more debt. Strategy two, increase income outside of the adware taxes, promote local businesses. Use Wood Creek as the city designation for online purchases, instead of saying Wimberley and unredressed, use Wood Creek. Consider increasing the hotel occupancy tax from zero to create special restricted funds, promote community tourism, and citywide improvements as allowed by governing code. Strategy three, seek advantageous development and franchise agreements. Pursue advantageous annexation agreements for any new development in the ETJ. Uh, consider creation of an economic development plan committee to oversee these actions and create policy to ensure the city can sustain itself. And strategy four, pursue alternative and outside funding. Seek grants for two undesired projects. Encourage the Parks Board to pursue a citizen-based non-robust Bible One C three to raise funds for park projects and walking trails. Okay, and I know that's kind of a process. Uh, land use, goal, maintain Wood Creek's character and promote sustainable resource management. Okay, strategy one, preserve the rural and residential character of the community. Review and update building and development ordinances. Uh, update subdivision and platting requirements, more strict with regard to division steps, and include environmental study. Strategy two, protect the watershed, limit impervious coverage, encourage sustainable building practices, promote water-wise landscaping, create protections in the Jacob's Well and Mental Trinity aquifer recharge zones to limit development and minimize impervious coverage. Utilize deep slopes and water quality management code to regulate development in the ETJ. Got a lot of steep slopes in the ETJ. Um, managing impervious cover and maintaining natural landscapes to minimize erosion and lessen the impact of flooding. Encourage developers to use conservation-style development in the ETJ, and uphold parkland and green space regulations. And then enforce the heritage and protected tree preservation efforts. Strategy three, seek to encourage development that aligns with resident preferences. Look for commercial opportunities that align with the residents' interests. Do not duplicate resources available in Wimberley. Enforce minimal impact forms through spaces such as water. Seek businesses that, uh, bring new money into the community rather than recirculate existing income or one that takes away income. Okay, so, those are all the strategies, those are all the action plans that we have to look at, how are we doing on those, that sort of thing. And on page six to nine of our comprehensive plan, we're almost to page seventy-six, how are we at? Okay, the plan roots, public engagement, reflecting the priorities of Wood Creek citizens, outlining expectations for, uh, action from city officials, which includes us and staff to address these priorities. Important for leaders to recognize implementation of COP Plan will serve the community and put resources into projects identified as residents. Continual review, recognize the need to review this plan, be sure we are on target with the community. Wood Creek Wimberley are growing rapidly, growth leads to unforeseen changes requiring response, and the plan provides direction and clear guidelines for anticipated development. New issues will arise, this plan is for reference and guidance, and the plan serves as benchmark to aid in planning and decision-making. And on page seventy-two, there's a whole, um, area on, uh, Wood Creek and the Wimberley Valley. And it just kind of states where we are, and, and that, some key action plans. Action, summary of action items deemed crucial to overall plan. These are the ones that were absolutely the top priorities. So page seventy-three is very important. And I did reiterate that one, because that one stands on its own. The next pages are the glossary and the appendix, which shows where, um, if somebody doesn't know what, you know, word in use, uh, themes, or a lot of images were used, so we have to credit them. And, that takes me to the last page. And the takeaway from this review, our next. At our next planning and zoning, uh, meeting, come prepared with your analysis, impressions, and suggestions. So that we can make, uh, recommendations to city council regarding the status of the comprehensive plan. Where are we in reference to this plan? What have we done well? What needs improvement? Uh, what have we, as city leaders, completed with regard to those action items? What do we have left to do? Is there anything we feel is not specifically called out that needs attention? And then, as Chris noted, there may be other things that we need to consider, concerns or comments. And that doesn't have to just come from us, if citizens want to have input at this point, I would think that that would be a good thing.
I would actually stress that part of a comprehensive plan, that this is a citizens document, it's not the ensues document, it's not council's document. This is the citizens telling us. So. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but it would make sense. If P and Z wish to come up with a new survey questionnaire. That we again, send out based on what reviews, you know, like you don't have to ask how you, the roads again, it. Maybe that would give a, a way to update the plan.
Yeah.
It's just a possibility.
I mean, that's, I've left it open. All I did was review what was there.
Yeah, and I think it was brilliantly done, because that's a lot of work there, it's a lot of document, and I appreciate how much you put into this to simplify it for everyone.
Thank you, because there was a lot of information.
There was.
But, you know, like I said, we've done a lot of these, and we've done some of them really well, some of them not. Some of them we haven't even looked at yet, so, I mean, we really need to look at that. And see how our citizens feel, because this is, this is the overall. End-all, we're, we're a community, and we need that input.
Thank you for doing that. Um. Yeah, I, um, I, I. I agree with, with what Chris said, um, I, I, I would add on to that, that I think an important aspect also is to, um. It's easy to live here and not really have a good idea about what's going on.
Exactly.
I mean, the roads we can see, we're like, oh, sweets, well, you know, read it.
That's a highly visible thing, but the drainage isn't.
Sure, the drainage isn't.
Until, until.
Until, until, you know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, people that don't have kids, that, that maybe don't thrive by the new park, may not even know that that's helpful. So in my mind, you know, what would be helpful is, um, you know, especially the, the action items in particular. You know, I, I love the idea of survey, I mean, that's the only way we're really going to figure out what the citizens, what, what the community as a whole. But, but I would, I would say, hey man, here's what we, the people, said back in December of twenty twenty-two. And, um, here's kind of where we are. I mean, roads was a top priority, and look at that, I think roads has been addressed. Um, any other issues with roads? Um, uh, another top issue was, um, you know, walking spaces. It doesn't seem that that's been addressed yet, maybe, maybe it's being addressed, but certainly we don't have walking trails or sidewalks or anything yet, you know, so. So, so, if, I think, I think you could do two things with that, you could. Educate or bring about awareness to people, A, that we have a comprehensive plan, B, that it's drafted by, by the people in the city. Um, and, and then we really are doing something. You know, people, the, the, the city, the, the government, um, is looking at that, and they are being guided by it, and, and they're starting to check these things out. Okay, roads, check. Swimming pool, maybe. Um, so, so.
Well, and the thing is, a comprehensive plan can be the wood, it can have an add-on to it, so. It's not like it's, it's a, a static document, it, it can move, so.
I've got a goal, so we're going to use our call here soon.
Okay, well, I don't have anything else, so.
Let's, let's just kind of, um. How do we want to do this? So, so this is published, so Tamara and Carlson have access to this, yes?
It will.
Really valid, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, so let's make sure they get a copy, and then, um, also help them to understand so that. Everyone that shows up at our next meeting, um, has, has kind of thought about this, and, and our options are. Um, you know, as individuals, we can be like, well, I, I looked through the comprehensive plan, and here's what's important to me. Um, versus maybe deciding to take Chris's ideas, like, hey man, instead of us, it's five people coming up with what we think's important. Not necessarily knowing what we've done or not, so, you know, let's throw this out to, throw this out to the whole city and, and.
Okay, I'm not sure what a new, new survey would add to it, I mean, we did a survey back in twenty-two. You know.
Well, but our, our job, our, our, our tasking is, how's it going, how, how, you know, how, how is it comprehensive, how's it going? We made the comprehensive plan, are we sticking to it, are people happy with it, how's it going?
If we get that, we get professional to actually write the questions. That way, you know, that way, so they're not biased and kind of. Sort of things where they would, you know, whatever, if, if that's the way you wanted to go, we wouldn't write the questions, we can give them guidance or whatever. But, and, and there's a professional that knows how to write those type of questions.
Yeah, and, and the topics would change, I mean, one of the number one topics was roads, well, that's, that's no longer going to be the number one topic, I predict. Um, so, so that's part of the growing, okay, you know, it's part of our twenty twenty-four revision of the comprehensive plan, whereas part of our recommendation. To city council, here's how we recommend, uh, revising the twenty, the comprehensive plan for twenty twenty-four. You know, make a new number one priority, which is blah, 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 and.
Yeah, you know, that's only a handful of people, outside of people involved in these communities, who spent their time to read this, that. And so, from the beginning, is, and this is all. Bitching about this, that's all, okay, that's who's going to end up.
Maybe.
Yeah.
So I don't see it very constructive, I understand, but either way, I have to go now, I've got my six o'clock.
Well, I'm going to, we, we enter. Since we want to.
Let's see, um, yeah, so our, our, our brief is actually, that would be to, um, bring it up at our next meeting. Um, and see if anybody else had any ideas, and that could be, like I say, ideas generated from what they, or it can be. Um, a proposal at that time to, let's, let's, let's send out a, a new survey, see how people can produce.
And I think the foundation should be based kind of on those action items as well.
For sure, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Chris, do you have anything else?
Uh, you lost the form.
You lost your block.
Yeah.
Very good.
We're done.
Okay, uh, in that case, I, uh, close the closing meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.